... meeting of August 24, 2020, in accordance with L B 890, 898, I should know that by now. Please be advised that there's a copy of the Open Meeting Act posted in the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it is formed, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The order of business of the city council is follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition on the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And then on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date or plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
A few announcements. In addition to having public comment in the council chambers, there will be a webinar that will be available for public comment for the city council meeting held on August 31, 2020. For those who wish to testify by webinar, you must register with the city clerk's office to participate. Please contact the city clerk's office at 402-441-7436 or by email at cityclerk@lincoln.gov. The city clerk's office must be notified by 12:00 P. M. the day of the meeting. In order to register, please provide your name, address, email address, and contact number. If you have any other concerns you wish to express to city council, please email them to councilpacket@lincoln.gov. If you still wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the county city building at 555 South 10th Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers, or you may wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you are finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the doors to your immediate left. We ask those of the general public coming forward to please testify, clearly state your name and spell your name, give your address, and please sign in on the sign-in sheet that's in the front of the entrance of the chambers. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department that you are working for. And once you have testified, and council doesn't have any further questions of you, please go ahead and exit to the doors to your left. And our first item on our agenda today for August 24, 2020, is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone wishing to address an item on the consent agenda for today? Seen none? Any questions, comments? Okay, let's move on.
We can vote on the consent agenda items. Item 1A is reappointing Sharon Bush to the Agent Partners Area Wide Advisory Council for our term to expire June 30, 2023, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Raybold. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Butler County to define the mutual and separate responsibilities of each in the operation management, support, monitoring, and evaluation of Butler County Senior Services, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Raybold. Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving an agreement for engineering services between the city and the Schimer Associates, Inc., for the 40th Street from Yankee Hill Road to Rockabye Road roadway improvement project, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded by councilperson Washington. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. And item 1D is manager application of Lindsay P. Bolander for the Country Club of Lincoln, doing business as Country Club of Lincoln at 3200 South 24th Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Okay, that ends our consent agenda. Moving on to section four is our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items 4A and 4B together. Application of Great Plains Beef LLC, doing business as certified Piedmontaise Beef for a Class CK liquor license at 4841 North 84th Street, and the related manager application of Benjamin D. Maids.
Would you like to come forward? Yes, please do.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Alex Essay, and I'm the legal representative for Great Plains Beef, Certified Piedmontaise.
Yes, question?
Sure. Do you know if there's going to be a restaurant associated with this at that location?
Yeah, so at this location, on the upper floor, there's going to be a restaurant. It's going to be a steakhouse. We just named it as Casa Bavina. And then on the bottom level, we will sell our steaks at retail. So you can kind of go to the restaurant or come down and get your steaks and go on your way home to cook them if you'd like, or stay there for the restaurant.
So this will be open when?
We're looking at opening this Friday.
Very good. So House of Cow?
That's right.
All right.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, could you tell me, when they put their application in, they had not yet taken the training. Have they taken the training?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And some of the, some of the pieces looked like they were missing, they were to be provided on the application. Do you know if all the missing pieces have been provided?
Those have all been provided, yes.
All right. And will Mr. Maines be the manager of Casa Bavina?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Yes.
Actually. What's the role of Thomas and Shane Pied to this operation?
So they are the owners.
They're the owners?
Yes.
Will they have any day-to-day responsibility for the management of the restaurant, or the?
Tom, no. Shane, likely not day-to-day, but he is kind of the overseen. You know, when issues arise, they'll go up to Shane.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a great use for Sun West Farms. Steakhouse in northeast Lincoln.
Yep. Pretty excited about it. Lucky to have Ben Maids here in Lincoln. He's a James Beard award winner, and he's been in Omaha for a while and came back to Lincoln. We're pretty fortunate to have him cooking at our restaurant.
That's good. Any other questions for him? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward on this item?
And then I move approval of items 4A and B.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by councilperson Ward. Any other comments, thoughts?
Delicious thing.
Good tasting thing. Okay, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We'll now move to section five, public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, a resolution to increase restricted funds authority by 1% per Nebraska Revenue Statute 13, 13-519.
Good afternoon, council chair and council members. I'm John Carlson, city staff. I work in the mayor's department. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about the 1% additional growth authority that's on the agenda today. And it's a little bit of a technical mechanism, but one that we think is really important to ensure that Lincoln continues to be a thriving and growing city. Start with just reminding us all, one of the keys to Lincoln's growth, we think, is our great public and private partnerships. And how we blend those two sectors together on the public side and their responsibilities, and the private side, and what we try and support and enable, we think really is one of the secrets for Lincoln's success. And as part of that partnership, as you know, we approve public investment in infrastructure and other services, then, that support the private sector's ability to come in and provide jobs, homes, businesses, entertainment, restaurants, and all the other things that continue to make Lincoln a great place to live. When those new homes and new businesses come in, they broaden the tax base, they create additional revenues that go to the public side, that we then reinvest back into the supporting items, and that cycle is able to continue. And that's kind of the recipe that we've been able to use here in Lincoln to continue to grow a great community. So state law, best in 1998, allows municipalities a 2.5% growth basically trajectory. And it allows an additional 1% you can put on top of that, if you want to give your municipality, your city, the ability to grow at a rate of 3.5% over time. And these are cumulative, and that's important because we'll see that growth, as you all well know, doesn't always happen in a straight line, right? We're lucky in Lincoln that we do have pretty consistent growth, but it grows and it goes up and down, obviously. And in a challenging year like this year with the pandemic, in fact, the budget has gone down slightly, and we've seen those revenues go down slightly. But we know that Lincoln will rebound, and we know that when it does, it's going to be important that we have made the act, made the steps and taken the actions necessary in order to preserve a very healthy growth curve for Lincoln. And why is that? Because without the additional 1%, you could eventually grow into the situation where you could have new businesses, new homes coming in. They could be generating additional revenue. You could be broadening the tax base. You could be allowing growth essentially to help pay for itself. But if you're not able to capture those revenues and then provide the services that those new businesses and homes need, those firefighters, those police officers, that snow removal, those services, then we've kind of interrupted that cycle. We've hamstrung our ability, then, to do the public part of the partnership that the private part is depending on, that makes that whole cycle work. So we think it's important to take this action today to provide that growth opportunity. I don't have much more, just a couple of last things. This is a fairly routine action that hundreds of municipalities, cities, and counties do all over the state. City councils, county boards, town boards all over the state. The city council approved this last year. County board has approved it every year since 2006. Omaha, Bellevue, Papillion, Fremont, Norfolk, Carney, the list goes on and on. These are cities that approve the additional 1%. And not surprisingly, because they want to preserve that flexibility, they want to preserve that headroom so that their city can continue to grow and attract new people, new homes, new businesses. And finally, I want to make sure that what you know, but make clear to the public, this in and of itself is not a tax or a spending increase. That power always continues to be reserved for this body. You set the budget, you analyze the needs, you listen to the taxpayers, and you set the revenues for the programs and the revenue collections that are necessary to fund those programs. This creates headroom, but in and of itself, it's not a tax or a spending increase. So that's pretty quick on an item that's fairly technical in nature. I appreciate you letting me take a few minutes. The finance director, Brandon Hoppins, in the back as well, and I am too. If questions come up, and we'd be happy to answer them.
We have any questions for Mr. Carlson? Seen none. I guess we're going to vote on the rest.
Other people need to get to talk.
Oh, yes. Public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay, seen none. Let's make the motion.
We can vote on this item. Item 5A is a resolution to increase restricted funds authority by 1% per Nebraska Revenue Statute 13-519, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second by councilperson Raybold. Yes, councilperson Christensen.
I would say that an alternative view of what happens when we reach the limit, run up against the lid, instead of limiting the growth of the city, what it does is limit the growth of city government and would then mandate by law a reduction in the levy, which some people might consider to be a good thing.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, councilperson Raybold.
I think we need to remind the public that this doesn't increase taxes, it doesn't increase our authority to go out and spend it, because every spending increase has to come right before this very body that we all have to approve and vote on. And again, you know, it's, it's not a controversial thing. Every single city council member that's on the RTSD has voted to approve that 1% additional lid for the Railroad Transportation Safety District. So it shouldn't be a controversial issue. I know that when I was on the county board, we approved it every single year. It's, it's a financial mechanism that promotes us and allows for growth in our community, and that's something that we, we certainly all want to see. So I will support this, like I have for a lot of years.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? I had one real quick, is that I really liked what John said about being able to spend on the edge and be able to capture that growth on the edge. And I'm going to hold him to it. That's what we would be doing with this extra money, continuing to grow, so. Okay, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1.
Suspense and drama there, huh?
I just give me Brandon a hard time.
Okay, we'll move to resolutions, action only, section six. Item 6A is approving the updated fees for open burning permits under LMC Chapter 8.06, air pollution, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Ward. Comments, questions? Yes.
I'm going to just make one comment to cover all of these things, and that, because they all have to do with fee increases, and we're in hard times right now. And there are a lot of people out of work. There are a lot of people who have reduced their hours at work, their businesses in their community, they're struggling. And this, these fees and this budget increase the total expenditure of the city by $42 million over last year. Increasing fees on top of increased property tax payments, frankly, and increased expenditures by the city is a kick in the teeth to Lincoln citizens who can least afford it. The people who are in the lower rung of the economic ladder are going to take an inordinate hit from this. And so instead of commenting on this way on every single one of these, I'm just going to say those, these comments apply to all the fee increases and the budget in general. Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. If, Councilman Christensen, are you saying that these fees raise $42 million?
No, not in and of themselves.
Okay.
No. But they are part of increased cost of living in Lincoln, Nebraska.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6B, approving the updated permit fees under LMC Chapter 5.41, salvage recycling and composting operations, including salvage recycling processing center, recycling center, consumer recyclables collection site, and commercial composting operations, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Raybold. Any comments, questions?
I have one comment.
Yes.
I understand that in order to trim the budget, recycling centers have been reduced across town, so that by the time we get well into this next fiscal year, we will have gone from 19 recycling sites to four or five. And I have heard from a number of people who are disappointed that the number of recycling sites are going down. And we're a city that has prided itself on becoming more resilient, and that means environmental resiliency. And so I am hoping that with these fee increases, that some of those monies can be set aside to bring back recycling sites, to make it easier for people to continue to do the recycling.
Yes, councilperson Raybold.
And I concur. It's, it's unfortunate, but the reality is that the cost of recycling has increased. So over this last year, we've been, we had to spend over $600,000 more to the private haulers. Why? Because our contract with the existing hauler, they went out of business. As we all know, commodities like aluminum and cardboard, they fluctuate on an open marketplace. And when those commodity prices go down, the recyclers don't make as much money. And therefore, in order for us to continue to keep these vital operations functioning and working, because our community wants us to maintain all these facilities, that there has to be a cost increase to allow us to pay the private haulers to haul recycling for us, because we know it's important.
Okay. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6C, approving the updated fees under LMC Chapter 8.08, body art establishments, including body art establishment permits, body art practitioner permits, and permit reinstatement, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions? Seen none? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6D is approving updated fees under LMC Chapter 8.14, childcare programs, including plan review for new program certificate of compliance, initial and renewal, and reinstatement of suspended certificate of compliance, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Shob. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6E, approving updated fees under LMC Chapter 8.20, food code, including food establishments, mobile food units, food catering services, temporary food establishments, reinstatement fees, and food handler and food manager permit fees, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that on this fee increase, there's no fee increase on Cottage Foods.
Yes, councilperson Raybold.
And I can say that as a business owner and operator of food establishments, that it's important and predictable that we have fees that we can budget for.
Okay. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion, motion, whoa. McGinnis voted no?
Yeah.
I voted no.
Okay. Motion carried 5-2. Item 6F, approving updated noise variance fees under LMC Chapter 8.24, noise control, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? Seen none? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Item 6G, approving updated fees under LMC Chapter 8.32, solid wastes, including special waste permits, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Ward.
Jane.
Jane.
Councilwoman.
Raybold.
Councilperson Raybold.
Any comments?
Man, you need an audiologist.
Yes. I can hear, I just can't see.
All of this in my head.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six H, approving updated fees under LMC Chapter eight point three eight, public swimming pools, including swimming pool permits, new permit plan review, renewal, additional spa, swimming pool operator, and pool water quality tester certificate introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six I, approving updated fees under LMC Chapter eight point four four, water wells, including water well construction permits, annual water well permits, water well repair permits, and variance applications introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six J, approving updated fees under LMC Chapter two four point three eight, onsite wastewater treatment systems, including construction and repair of onsite wastewater treatment systems, cleaner permits, installer permits, and development area reviews introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? Please call a roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six K, approving updated permit fees under LMC Chapter two four point four two, regulation of property transfers with onsite systems, including review of property transfers with onsite wastewater or water systems introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments, questions? I have one. This is something that I go way back on. We worked on this probably been twenty, twenty-five years ago when I was with the Realtors Association, and we opposed it then, because what it does is between the state and the city, they both collect fees for any time you transfer a property. Let's say you have a well or a wastewater system or a septic tank on an acreage, and they both have to inspect them there for a long time. And what this did is anybody transferring the property has to have them inspected at that time of transfer. And I just think this is something that's been a, has kind of been a waste of effort. But it was a chance, and quite frankly, a chance for the health department to have an inspection and get an inspection fee at the time. So this one kind of sticks with me a little bit over the years, so. Okay. Any other question? Please call a roll.
Christensen?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion carrying five two. Item six L, approving updated permit fees under LMC Chapter two eight point zero two, regulations for illicit discharges introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward.
Actually, Councilperson Raybold.
Raybold?
Yes.
Okay.
I can help, really.
Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six M, amending Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Regulations and Standards, Article One, Section Six, fees to update fees for required services to business and industry introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six N, establishing a new rate schedule for Lincoln Water System for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt service and the capital improvement programs for fiscal year 2020-21 introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any other comments? Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. Item six O, establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln wastewater system for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and the capital improvements program for fiscal year 2020-21 introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any comments, questions? Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carrying six one. That concludes our resolutions, action only. Moving on to section seven, public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. Item seven A is change of zone one seven zero three zero B, application of Lenoa Lincoln WCLLC to amend the existing planned unit development to include a waiver to reduce the required parking on property generally located at Eighty-Eighth Street and Bobtail Road.
Do we have anybody here that would like to speak on this?
Do we have a presentation?
Change of zone application?
Yes.
Director Carey?
David Carey with the planning department director. Just in lieu of the applicant, I would just give you kind of a general overview of what this is. It's a, at this point, we have done many of these where we lower the required parking requirement for the development that has requested it, and it makes sense for that. The reason why this makes sense for this, in this case, is that they are committed to sixty-five percent minimum, that would be studios in one bedroom with no more than thirty-five percent of the units at a maximum of two bedrooms per unit, and that obviously will limit the amount of overall cars needed to be parked in the development. So some other examples of those that we've done this recently at two-two-five North Cotner, we went from two stalls required down to one point four. The Highland Apartments, we were allowed to go from two to one point five. And then the Southridge Village, Twenty-seventh and Yankee Hill Road, excuse me, Pine Lake Road, also went from two to one point five. So we have a kind of a trend here of allowing this to be allowed, and this limits some costs for the development itself, and also this has not appeared to be showing any negative impacts to neighborhoods due to the smaller unit sizes that are being agreed to. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for Director Carey?
Yes.
Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Carey, I have a question. This pertains, of course, to parking, because I was curious if the applicant had given any indication about, within that sixty-five percent that are studio and one bedrooms, have they given any indication about how many might be studios and how many one bedrooms?
I don't know of the exact split. I don't believe they did provide us an exact split.
Okay.
They did. Sixty-five percent one bedroom slash studio units and thirty-five percent two bedroom units.
I think you're asking if there was a split within the sixty-five percent.
Right, a further split. A breakdown of the sixty-five percent. Because I'm just curious, because a lot of times, you know, a couple will move into a one bedroom and then they each have a car. And because this is a little bit on the edge of Lincoln, I am curious, what's the access to public transit? What's the forecast for that? Because I think that the further you get away from the center of town and public transportation, there might be a greater likelihood of having more than one car. And I'd just like to know.
Yeah, so that is a good comment for anything that's on the edge that's being approved. You know, at this time, there isn't any guarantee that there's going to be transit service to this location in particular. Certainly, as areas develop, you know, every year, I know Star Trans looks at potential demand and how their routes can be adjusted to make sure that they're covering as much as they can with the expectation that there's at least some demand for that service. So at this time, there's no expectation that it's going to be direct service to this area, but certainly those things will be looked at. I think there's also a good point of information there, which is that while there is a policy for Star Trans to try to serve as much of the community as possible, there's kind of that tipping point of whether or not it makes sense to provide service versus the amount of demand that's there. So that, this is one of those kind of areas where as it emerges and begins to develop, eventually it will make some more sense to look at being serious about providing service, but certainly not right now.
Yeah. Well, I would encourage them to lean heavily on the heavier side of one and a half stalls per person, per apartment, because I think that they're gonna find that there are more cars in that establishment than what they may think. I understand on Cotner and down on Pine Ridge and Twenty-seventh Street, they're both being serviced by Star Trans right now, but out on the edge, I have some concern.
Any other comments at this point? I have, I have one. This area is all new. The area that they purchased is separated by a creek and by a large buffer area from Van Dorn, so I don't see any spillout into the neighborhood as a problem, because someone would have to park blocks away or from their apartment. I see this more as a contained area, and I believe these, this group has built and done apartment complexes before, so they know how many cars. They're not gonna underpark, otherwise you have a functionally obsolete project if you don't have enough parking for your customers. So I firmly believe that this is what they want. I don't see it as being a problem. Okay? Any other questions? Anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
Item seven B, change of zone two zero zero two four, application of Aaron and Lonnie Byrd for a change from H-three Highway Commercial District to R-four Residential District, and from I-one Industrial District to H-three Highway Commercial District, a property generally located at North Twenty-seventh Street and Old Dairy Road.
Go ahead. I'm Aaron Byrd, and I'm here to request a change of zone in the property that you guys have. Reason for change of zone is to, best use of this land and property is to establish a community unit plan. We are in the process of designing this, and in order to achieve the community unit plan, which commission and planning department both support, the change in zone is required. Besides that, it's pretty simple, so if you guys have some questions, I'll answer them. If not...
Do we have any questions for the applicant? One of these, oh, well, we can talk about this later with David. Okay.
We good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Anybody else like to come forward, speak on this?
Good afternoon. My name's Deanna Eliker, D.E.A.L.I.K.E.R. I'm in favor of the project. I think it doesn't require spot zoning. It's contiguous to a project that's similar in nature. There's been other considerations for use on the property, which didn't meet zoning and use at the time. So this is a project that seems like it'd be good for the neighborhood, good for the city, and good for the people involved. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'm in support of it.
Seeing none, thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Hurt, J.E.N.N.I.F.E.R., H-U-R-T. I believe that this land needs to be, something needs to be done with it. It's set vacant for many, many years, and it's time the city allowed it to be changed so we could do something better use for it. I'm for this project.
Hi, I'm Kevin Hurt, and H-U-R-T, last name, and I'm also for this project. It has been vacant for many years, and Aaron has put a good proposal together with what he wants to do with it, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that could come forward this time? David, you wanna come up? I don't know if it's much of a question or maybe more of a statement. Are we taking all of the I-one then? Is that correct? Or is it a portion of the I-one?
To give you a better idea, I might show you on the overhead here.
Right. Thank you. Making it a highway, commercial.
Yeah, so this is taking, this is taking care of this area of I-one, which is obviously, you know, more adjacent to the proposed move to residential here as well. This one would be H-three to R-four. This is the I-one to H-three. And just a little bit of background, the change to I, from I-1 is, we've been consistent in areas that have been established for a while, especially the much older areas than this, but this is, falls into the category. Where some areas have been originally zone I, historically, there was some idea that some other type of use would happen. This change from the I zoning to the H3 zoning, there would be no creation of non-conforming uses. So we felt like that this was the time, along with this proposal, for a new residential area that is actually adjacent to existing residential. So the residential makes all the sense in the world at this point. But then to take this opportunity with those areas that are adjacent to the existing residential and the proposed residential, to remove the I because there's no conflict with the existing uses, and then prohibit, not prohibits, but limits the amount of exposure that the residential could have for some of the I activity that we don't like to see right next to residential. And that's also why we've been making these changes in other areas of the city to limit that potential conflict. So it's the same thing here. It just happens to be a newer area, not the really old areas, the long old rail beds and things like that.
Okay. Councilperson Washington.
Director Curie, I don't think you've, I'm going to ask you to use your memory here, because I believe there's some more I-1 contiguous here.
To the north.
To the north, yeah. So could you point out on the map where the I-1 will remain?
Believe that as you go further to the north and off the map, that there's some other I zoning. We felt like because this area is involved, really in the sense of with ownership, as well as with the fact that it's contiguous to the proposal for the new residential, that these are the areas that make the most sense to come in with a package.
Right. I think that there's a business, though, within I-1 that's going to stay I-1, that needs that zoning to remain.
Correct.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that they're not, we're not going to push them out.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak on this item today? Seeing none, we can move on. Third reading.
Moving on to section eight, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 8A, amending chapter 5.04 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to alcoholic liquor by amending section 5.04.125 to deposit the server seller permit fees into the Health Fund to remove the requirement for a segregated responsible beverage server seller fund by repealing section 5.04.126 in its entirety and repealing sections 5.04.125 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Bowers.
Second. And moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Yes. This is an important piece of legislation that's required by some of the changes that have happened in the way things have been done in the past, by some of the partners who work with the city. So this is just a necessary transition into a new way of doing things.
Okay. Any other questions? Please call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 8B is amending section 8.32.150 of the LMC to increase the occupation tax on the refuse haulers from $12.15 per ton to $17.15 per ton, effective January 1, 2021, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions on this one? I have one quick one. I probably won't be approving this, because this is a new tax or new fee, which is a large increase. You take a $5 into the 12. It's a larger increase than a percentage inflationary increase, so... Any other questions? Okay. Please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion carried 5-2. Item 8C, in ordinance to temporarily suspend provisions of chapter 3.06 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow the city to adopt an annual budget rather than a biennial budget, as is provided for in Lincoln's municipal charter, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any questions, comments on your budget? Okay. Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 8D, amending section 4.24.070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to remove the cap on the dividend for utility ownership received from the Lincoln Electric System and repealing section 4.24.070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Comments? Questions? Again, I'll have one comment on this. For me, this goes back on something in the past that was agreed to by people in the past, that we would continue to have the cap, and that was one of the ways that we were able to agree to bringing forward this dividend, so-called dividend, tax on the individuals. This doesn't bother LES at all, because it's passed through to every ratepayer, and every ratepayer now is going to pay more. So it would go to the city. I just, in good faith, can't vote to go back on something that we thought we were all working with in the past. And again, it's, it's not good for people that struggle and have a tough time paying the electrical bill. And so it's going to be more of a burden on them. Okay? Please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
I get twice?
I'm sorry.
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Motion carried 5-2.
In Chicago.
Okay, next.
Item 8E, amending chapter 2.80 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to social security to remove the creation of a separate property tax levy line to fund the city's social security obligations by repealing section 2.80.090 in its entirety, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 8F, approving the transfer of unspent and unencumbered appropriations between certain capital improvement projects within the Parking Facilities Construction Fund for the Urban Development Department, within the Keno Funds for the Parks and Recreation Department, and within the Health Fund for the Health Department, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
And for the tough one.
Item 8G, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance to amend ordinance 20927 to correct the legal description of property to be annexed near 105th Street and Century Lane, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? No thoughts, no questions? Okay. Please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That ends our ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Next, we have section nine, budget resolution for action only. 9A, adopting the 2020, 21 City of Lincoln operating budget and capital improvement program, CIP, one and six-year street and highway program, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments or thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I believe we have a substitute resolution.
That's what I was wondering, on this, do we?
Yes.
I would be, I'm so glad to move that. Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. And this is a motion to amend?
Nope. Substitute.
Substitute. Substitute.
Substitute resolution.
We need to have a vote.
Okay. So we're voting on the substituted document.
Resolution.
Resolution. Any other comments, questions? Councilperson Raybold.
Well, I intend to support this budget resolution and the one and six-year street and highway plan. I think if you look at the budget overall, we're spending actually $4 million less. The $42 million shows up in the capital improvement plans. You know, that fluctuates every year, goes up and it comes down, depending upon the projects that we have on the docket to try to attempt to get done. I think it's a budget that reflects the priority of our community, despite the pandemic that we're all going through. We've listened, we had numerous budget hearings. When we customarily just have one very long one, we had several very long budget hearings. And I'm grateful for the participation of so many, because we wanted to hear your voices. And I think, most importantly, you know, we want to continue and build on the progress in rebuilding community trust, since the riots and the peaceful protests. We have learned so much, and we all agree that we can and will do better. We stand committed, as I know Lincoln Police Department, that I am very proud of, on improving transparency, on improving accountability, to increase funding and training for implicit bias, to increase training for de-escalation, and to continue to partner, as we have for the last 10 years, with the real program, with peers and behavioral health experts to assist when it comes to calls for domestic disturbances, to de-escalate and provide the necessary services. And really, we've added funding this year, because we know there is a tremendous need and continues to be an increasing need of $150,000 to the network. We have a spectacular network, an incredible network of dedicated professionals, nonprofit behavioral health partners, that find solutions in helping all those in crisis. We intend to fund and support and adhere to strict accountability standards of the increased funding for body cameras, with disciplinary consequences for those that fail to use the body cameras as dictated. And we plan to continue to monitor school resource officers and the positive impact and fair impact they have on students, and to work with all families of color to ensure that they do. We heard loudly and clearly from so many, Black Lives Matter, and we have to find the balance to continue to support Lincoln Police Department. I've said and stated many, many times, defunding the police is not going to achieve the outcomes that we all want to see. And so I'm, I'm very thankful that our Lincoln Police Department continues its tremendous community outreach to those, and continues the tremendous community dialogue that has to continue, so that we can build on the successes, so that we can build on the best practices as other communities, so we can maintain the peace. And I want to thank Lincoln Police Department for rolling up their sleeves and reaching out to so many, to hear their concerns and to act on them responsibly and diligently, and to continue to rebuild the trust in our community. So this is a good budget. I'm thankful for all that have participated with their comments and suggestions.
Thank you. Councilperson Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things I would like to say. Also, in support of adopting this budget, it's been my first budget process as a councilperson, and I've learned much along the way, thanks to my colleagues in the mayor's office and others, our finance director. But in terms of the fees, I just wanted to say, these are modest fees. And if we, if we want to continue to provide good services, this is a creative and innovative way to do this, and we could have done this long ago, and we haven't. And so I appreciate the innovation to do that with the, with these small fees. And I, I have long advocated personally and professionally for those less fortunate than most of us. And so, I know that's been mentioned a couple of times today. That does not occur to me, especially as it relates to LES customers. Nobody does, as a former board member, I know Councilman McGinnis and I disagree on this, but I can tell you, and I want the public to know, as a former board member to, on, on the LES board, nobody does better outreach to the low income, lower income than LES, to help people pay their bills. And they actually deferred electric bills this year during the pandemic, so don't let that worry your minds in terms of this increase. So in light of that, we did help close the budget gap by asking our city departments to make a lot of courageous cuts, and for that, I thank them, and I'm grateful for that as well. So having said that, I just want you to know, I intend to support with a yes vote and adopt this year's budget. It was a tough one to do, but we had a lot of good help. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak at this time? Okay. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1. Next is section 10, which is our resolutions' first reading.
Wait, wait.
We're going to get there.
We, don't we need to vote on the?
Nope.
We substituted the...
Not on the original. It's a resolution, not an ordinance.
No.
What are you saying? Did we vote on the sub, and then do we have to go back? We did both of those, we did too.
We voted for the substitute.
And then we voted for the right, after the substitute.
No, we just voted.
We don't have to.
We don't have to, because it's substituted, it didn't amend.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm used to two votes, too.
I know.
I know.
Believe me, we'll have a chance to vote a lot here, coming up.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for entertaining my confusion.
I was right there with you. Okay. In the same room.
Get some skin in the game, right?
Oh, skin in the game.
Sports references.
Got to stay in the game.
Okay. Let's move on.
Section 10 is resolutions' first reading, our items 10A through 10F. Ordinance's first reading and related resolutions are items 11A through 11F. Section 12 is our pending list, date certain. Motion to amend number one. To substitute the ordinance.
Do we want to do this today?
You know, I wanted to, there is yet another substitution. I think we just got a little out of sync with each other. This was the first substitution, but since last Monday, we have been working diligently. And I will have another substitution, probably by 5 o'clock.
So we don't need to do this.
Okay, so we don't have.
Nothing today.
Thank you very much.
We will have a different one here.
I think we just got our pages mixed up. We'll have another substitution as soon as we open our email.
Okay.
Okay.
So no action on 12A. Okay. So item, section 13 is our pending list. Those are items 13A through 13G.
Yes, Councilperson Christensen.
In my understanding is that there is a resolution to items 13E, F, and G, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so in order to bring these back, these are for action only, but in order to bring them back to our agenda for today, we need to have a motion to suspend the rules. So I move to suspend the rules to bring these items back for amendment and vote.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments? Okay, please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now we need a motion to put these, to take action.
We just need to have the amendments now.
Okay.
So need, just to read.
Yep.
You need to read them.
I would read.
Read the motion.
Would you like me to read all three together or separately?
Separately.
Okay.
Yes.
Item 13E, comprehensive plan conformance 20009, declaring approximately 0.26 acres of city-owned property generally located at 2510 South 48th Street as surplus, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilman Ward. Any comments? We're just voting on the comp plan amendment at this point.
Right.
There's no amendments to this one.
No, no amendments, just for the purchase agreement. Okay. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 13F, 20-100, approving a real estate estate purchase agreement between the City and Antelope Park Center Company LLC for the sale of a small area of the Antelope Creek Greenway to the adjoining property owner at 2510 South 48th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward.
And I ask for, I motion for an amendment to the original agreement. It's in front of us, as motion to amend number one.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we amend the motion with motion to amend number one. And this is to add the section regarding the future use agreement.
Yes.
To us, and it's...
And this, this one specifically looks at potential impacts, to mitigate any potential impacts from future development on this parcel to the channel, the Antelope Creek Channel.
Other comments? Yes? Yes.
I just want to say, I thank Councilwoman Washington for bringing this up and bringing it to our attention, how important it is to make sure that any removal of the trees that are planned for this project don't have a detrimental impact.
Any other comments? Please call a roll on the motion to amend.
Could you reconfirm who seconded that motion to amend one?
Council.
Ward.
Ward.
Thank you.
Got that one right.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Councilperson Ward.
Mr. Chair, I would move to amend, to adopt a substitute agreement.
We've got to read it first.
Oh, okay.
The 13G.
No, we're still on F.
We're still on F?
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I move to amend motion number two.
Second.
And moved in second that we have another motion to amend. This is to amend the purchase price. Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
And I just want to thank our Chair McGinnis for working behind the scenes and in front to make sure that we really work with all the departments to come up with a fair price for this land that really ultimately improves the actual agreement itself and hope, and allows the taxpayers to see a greater benefit with the sale of this property. So I really want to commend Chair McGinnis for rolling up his sleeves and pointing out some fundamental issues that needed to be corrected. So thank you very much. And I will support this motion to amend, to amend the purchase price.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call a roll on motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Does anybody have any questions on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 13G is Change of Zone 20020, Application of the Parks and Recreation Department Director for a Change from P Public District to B1 Business District of Approximately .47 Acres on Property Generally Located at 2510 South 48th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Washington. Any questions, comments? Please call. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the third of three that takes care of this parkland. And I want to just take a moment to thank the Parks Department. They negotiated in good faith.